This meeting is being recorded.
So, thank you everyone for joining us. I have 7:01 on my clock and seeing as there's a quorum of the Public Safety Committee, I am calling us to order. As I understand it, we have one item on the agenda tonight. That's considered if the Shorewood Police Department needs to acquire an early intervention system platform. And for the introduction of the item, I will turn it over to Captain Leventhal.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. We had previously started to discuss this, but ran out of time on a previous meeting. So just bringing it back to give it further discussion and a little bit more, more thought. So this is one of the items that was identified in the Alexander Weiss Police Organization study. And in, in the document, we identified it as number, item number 68. And what he had indicated on there was to determine Shorewood Police Department needs to acquire an early intervention system platform. Now, these platforms are computerized databases of officer performance indicators that help identify any potential issues or concerns or problems with an officer. Things like use of force, citizen complaints, use of sick time, disciplinary records, things of that nature. All factor into these systems. And then when the system senses that there is, or identifies that there is an issue or a problem based on a combination of any of these factors, it'll send an alert. And then once you get the alert, it prompts the supervisors to look at the information to see, is there anything that is identifiable as an issue or problem or concern that we need to address with an officer before it becomes too big a problem or too big a concern? Now, we did have a system of this type with the agency from 2014 to 2016. It was called the Guardian Tracking System. And at the time, the software that we had, it had a subscription cost of $1,000 per year. And with the system, with most of these systems, you're able to set the thresholds at which you want to examine issues or problems as they come up. And whether it be a single issue or a combination of issues. And at that time, we had set that program at the lowest possible level for it to send off a trigger. So it was the lowest setting we could have. It should have been something that would have been easier to attain, to, to get to in actual alert. And even with that, we had very few instances of any alerts that came out. And primarily because that's, you know, we didn't have a lot of use of force incidents, a lot of citizen complaints, very few disciplinary actions, very low sick usage. And so when we did have triggers that did come from the system, they were examined, they were reviewed, and they were basically determined to be false positives. And we spent a lot of, a lot of time inputting in information into the system, but not getting a lot out of it. So for that reason, it was determined it wasn't being useful for the agency. We stopped using the system. Over that time, since 2016, we've kind of developed our own in-house tracking and review of these types of situations and incidents. And supervisors and command staff would track these incidents through Word documents and Excel spreadsheets essentially. And right now, we have enhanced our tracking of use of force, enhanced our tracking of citizen complaints based on things that we've discussed here at Public Safety that were implemented through suggestion through the Alexander Weiss study. And with the enhanced tracking of those, we feel that we have a pretty good handle on any of these types of situations that may come up and they may be able to be identified pretty quickly because with each of those, with the citizen complaints and with the use of force incidents, those documents that track and document that get reviewed by multiple layers of supervision through the initial supervisor, the command level at, whether it be the captain or at the time that when we first started doing these was the deputy chief title. But then eventually it'd get reviewed by, by the chief of police. And with use of force, we've even added an additional layer of a review by our Defense and Arrest Tactics Instructor, who's one of the more knowledgeable people in the areas of use of force within the department. And so with those enhanced layers of review, we thought that it would be pretty easy for us to be able to identify if something were occurring. And we did discuss this issue with the officers back in October when we were originally planning to bring this before we ran out of time at the previous meeting. And the officers across all three shifts reviewed the information and discussed it with us. And they provided feedback saying that they also didn't feel that the prior system was effective. It really didn't give much feedback for them. And one of the concerns that they had is when you look at just solely the data, you're now looking at the information behind the data. The reason is the facts of the situation. You're just looking at strictly data level material. And they thought that that could provide false indicators. And, you know, they're concerned about having these alerts generated when there wasn't actually an issue. Another thing that they felt from their end is that with the department being small in size, 25 total sworn staff, problems of this type with use of force or citizen complaints, you know, things that can easily hide in a larger agency would be easily rooted out at this level with our, with our number of people. It'd be easy to identify it. And so they felt with the number of officers assigned to each shift and the number of respective supervisors to supervise those officers, they felt that it would be easy to identify issues, problems, or concerns. Now, we did go and look at some software packages. We reached out to multiple vendors, including our prior vendor, the Guardian Tracking System. And only two vendors actually responded to any of our requests for information or to try to get information about their products. One of the two providers was LEA Data Technologies. And included in your packet is a PDF that's put together that kind of just highlights some of the basically the highlight of their program that, that they have. They have a software system that they entitled Administrative Internal Affairs Suite. And it highlights what the various things within that program that are involved with their early intervention system. The different components, the different types of information that can be extracted or put into it. Their software license would be a one-time setup cost of $2,700 to cover all the light, the software and all the licensing that we would need for the supervisors to be able to use it within the agency. They do also put out updates on a yearly basis. And sometimes they'll put out two updates during the course of the year and occasionally they would put out a third update. Each additional update is $100 plus shipping for every single update that they would be sending us. So we'd have to factor that in as a possible cost as well. But in their, in their software package, if you were to scroll through the PDF that's included in, in the document there. The, the software system, unfortunately, what I gave to you here doesn't include some screenshots from, from the system. I was trying to keep it lean just to give you the information. But the actual appearance of the software system appears to be pretty dated. I haven't seen any reviews of the software from anywhere. I haven't, I don't know of any other agencies that are currently using it. And I can't really give you anything other than what was provided to us in terms of what the ins and outs of the program are in their PDF. So I'm really not familiar with this company. I'm not really familiar with the software product at all. We could potentially ask them for a trial version of the software, which I believe, if I remember correctly, would be for 30 days and we could give it a trial run. But again, I don't know much more about the product than what was provided and what was provided in a short conversation on, on phone with them. Another software vendor that we could go through is one we're a little bit more familiar with. It'd be through Deer Creek Technologies. It's a company that we currently utilize to do some online document storage and training internally with the department. It's something that we found to be very useful within the department, that we're able to push out training materials across all three shifts without having to have instructors available live with the material, if it's things that could be done without a live instructor. It also tracks completion of, of the training and things of that nature. All the accounts are already set up for all of our employees. We wouldn't have to do any additional setup costs or anything of that nature. With that, we do, like I said, we do utilize the document storage and training portion of their product right now. We are paying $584, I believe it is a year for that one. Let me just get back to that one and get the actual cost for you for sure. $582 or $8, I'm sorry. $552 per year is what our current cost is for the document management and training system. If we were to add on their early intervention warning system program, it would only be an additional $300 cost each year. And again, it's a system that would track all the various things that we had talked about. We would be able to do a trial run with their program as well to see how the software works, if it's useful for us or not useful for us. We'd have a 30-day trial on that as well. There is no long-term commitment with them. We can cancel at any time. And they are very interested in seeing if we would be interested in trying to take in the, the product for, for a trial run at this point as well. You know, their, their other program is something that we are very familiar with and we're very happy with. And when we've had any issues or any problems with it, they're very responsive to our requests for, for service and, and to fix any issues that are going on. So with that, I would like to hear or open it up for any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you, Captain Leventhal. Just, just one thing, and maybe this is reiterating some of the points you've already made, but I'm wondering if, you know, I know you're not incredibly familiar with the LEA software, but I'm wondering if you can kind of contrast key differences between the two. Just kind of in terms of your knowledge of how both systems work, what are the, what are the key differences that you would highlight for us? I think there's, and the reason I ask is, you know, I, I would think, you know, given the priority set within the community, that we'd find money in the budget for either of these. So so I think we have some, we have some choice here. It really depends on kind of the optionality of what we want included in the package. So do they send you, could you shed any light on kind of what the key difference is in terms of what they measure and what they output? I think it would be appreciated.
In terms of what they measure, what they output, they, they pretty much would measure the same, same things, the same types of material that we would view as things that could be potentially a concern, use of force, citizen complaints, sick abuse, disciplinary incidents, counseling sessions, things of that nature, where if you have so many of those within a certain period, you tend to kind of think that something might be going on here. That's more than what it may seem on the surface that we might need to dive into and see if there's any, any issues going on with the, with the employee, either at work or at home or a combination of two that we can try to help address and cut off or head off any, any other big picture, long-term issues or problems or concerns. I mean, pretty much the same indicators would be tracked across both. The one thing that I can tell you from looking at the material and from looking at the screenshots that were provided, the LEA system seems very much more like an, an access database that would have to be loaded on each machine manually and then updated on each machine manually as well. Whereas the Deer Creek Technologies is more of a cloud-based system where everything is done online. There's nothing to install, nothing that gets saved or retained on our local servers or desktops or anything of that nature. It's all maintained on their end, which could be very helpful that if we had an issue internally with a device that goes down or any, like a virus that may hit a machine or something of that nature, none of that data would potentially be compromised internally with it being out in the cloud versus with the LEA system with it being on the machine, the data that's on there could be corrupted and then may corrupt the other machines. So.
Maybe this was, this might be beyond what you can answer, but if, if there was an interest in, in public access to this information, as I'm sure, sure there would be. I, I, based on what you said and based on my admittedly very limited technical knowledge, I'm wondering if you think that Deer Creek would be the better choice? I mean, if it lives in the cloud, I, I'm just kind of curious as to whether there's any kind of insight into being able to fulfill public requests for access to this information and which vendor would better be able to assist with that.
I, I think the Deer Creek one would probably be better served with that. I mean, it lives in the cloud and, and we could still extract and download or, or print or, you know, produce whatever from there. And again, I, I do think that with our history with Deer Creek, that we're familiar with them and that when we've had problems, which have been very few that we've had, but in the instances that we've had, they have been extremely responsive and have gotten the system back online in a very short order. And so if we have requests for information, we're not at the mercy of trying to have our IT techs worth work with the software providers' tax to try to solve the solution to extract the data. With it being a cloud-based system, you'd hope that they'd have backups that they could just restore things and get it up and running very quickly.
Thank you, Captain Leventhal. At this point, any, or any of my fellow committee members, trustee, our group of trustees, token brand, any questions from you?
Yeah, I mean, speaking for myself, building on what you were saying, I mean, I would be interested in comparing the two systems more clearly to get a sense of whether there's any gaps between, you know, what we would see with what we could get out of LEA versus the Deer Creek system. And just, you know, are there any areas where Deer Creek might fall short relative to the data that we could get out of? Out of LEA. And I guess a different, another question I had would be the internal system we have in place now that you referenced, does that, I mean, is that anything that the Police Commission currently evaluates or is that anything that we should think about on that front?
It, it doesn't necessarily go to the Police Commission unless it's something that would raise to the level of a suspension, termination or demotion at this point. And pretty much since, since we started using, excuse me, our current internal policies, we haven't really sent anything for suspension or termination that I can recall. So I don't believe it's been anything that's gone to them at this point. Excuse me, sorry.
All right. Yeah. And I, I'm also building on what trustee Warren said. I, I am interested in what the opportunities for public disclosure are with, with, between the two systems and what.
Between the materials that I reviewed, it seemed like the Deer Creek one had slightly better reporting capabilities just based on the documentation that I could see.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Thank you. Trying to get familiar with my unmute button for the evening. So my first thinking is I have two issues with timing. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. One of them is we have, we still have COVID. I think, you know, we still see the numbers in a lot of the police, I was just looking at November, which is the last month of police data on the website and, and numbers are still down. And for, I, I do think a lot of that has to do with COVID yet. I could be wrong. I'm no expert. The other thing is we're getting a new police chief. And so my question would be, is this a time to institute a policy like this without input from the new chief? Because I think we're three months maybe away from getting that done. And would it be better to, to wait until that happens? My other question is not about timing as much as time. So looking at, I mean, this looks like it's, it's an administrative thing. So if you have people spending time documenting things or is that time that could be spent somewhere else? But my understanding is this would be time documenting problem issues, right? Cause we're talking about possible interventions. So that crosses that box off for me, right? My, the officer's time. And then to the other trustees' points about transparency. So what good does it do if we have a system that's only proprietary for the police department? If transparency is, so like I can go online now, we've increased a lot of the visibility, the transparency for a lot of the different data, right? All the different things that are available by month here. So I guess the question becomes to me then, how do we bring transparency to, is there a complaint about an officer? I mean, we've, we've updated the form and we know that the Police Commission, we know their role now, but what about the public? Unless someone can help explain this to me, how are we making it known? And obviously because of personnel issues, you can't say Officer A was accused of this on Thursday by a person, right? We've got all kinds of privacy issues there. But it is important to know if officers are getting, if complaints are coming in about officers. And so maybe this is like the final piece and I don't want to approve something, given the timing issues I've had and not knowing how, how would it still be made available to the public in a meaningful way that still respects the victim in quotes, and the officer?
With the, starting at the beginning of the year here with the January report that we'll be posting, one of the things that we plan on adding to our annual, or I'm sorry, our monthly reporting is a breakdown of complaints and where they are in terms of completed, in progress. And, you know, and if they already have been completed, what, what was the outcome? You know, was it sustained? Was it unfounded or was the officer exonerated? What's the case may be?
So that seemed like that would kind of have to be a cumulative report, right?
Correct. Yeah. We could break it down by month and then include like year-to-date total or perhaps compare and contrast between last year and this year. In that terms, I, I wouldn't want to go back any further than 2021 because of the fact that we changed how we handled the complaints during that timeframe. You know, prior to that, it was the formal written complaints is what was being tracked. Now, since the Weiss report, we are tracking every complaint of any kind. If you know, someone calls and just says, I want to complain about this and I don't want to file a formal complaint. I just want you to be aware of it. It's being tracked and looked into.
And so for example, you could say complaints filed within the last 30 days and you would have maybe, let's, I'll make up a number four. And then you would have, like another category would say unresolved in, you know, 30, so we have a so urgency would be tracked, like was this dealt with within 60, 90 days?
Right. And we could have date received, current status, or they could, they receive, they completed current status. If, if there's not a date that's in there and what the disposition was.
Okay.
Certainly get into the nuts and bolts of the complaint, but at least, you know, make people aware of how many we received and what the status is and where we are with them.
I think that's like the final key piece, right?
Yeah. And a, a system of this type, it may be useful depending on the type of reporting, if you could, you know, see what kind of reports we could generate out of it without getting into specifics that would identify individuals. We could look and see if there's things we could pull out of that. Otherwise, we'll see what else we could, we could do with the, the data that we could extract either from our current way of handling things or if we were to go with a system of this type.
And so just to re- recap, you said you had started this new system in 2021 after the Weiss report was okay. So I guess those would be my only reasons to not support some you know, those things COVID, we're getting a new police chief and we've had this, this new system in place for less than a year. And that would
The one thing to say about the timing with the new chief with the Deer Creek system, if you did decide to go with it, it, they would only charge for the time period that you're with them as far as that goes. They wouldn't charge a full year if you weren't with them with the full year and you can cancel at any time. Whereas with the LEA system, it is regardless of however the one-time setup costs and licensing fees, which was, I believe, 2,700 if I remember correctly. Yeah. And then any additional updates on top of that. So if you decided, if a new chief came in and decided they didn't want to do this any longer and, and or you decided this isn't useful, we don't want to continue with it. They could change instantly essentially on the fly from Deer Creek. Whereas the other one, you could just stop using it, but you have a much bigger front-end input in terms of, of money that would be invested into the system.
Thank you.
So I guess at this point, you know, given the, given the time constraints that we're operating under, Rebecca, what, what do you need from us tonight? And I'm hearing, again, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that there's, you know, it feels like there's support to move forward with one of the early warning systems. There's some question about timing and some question about really trying to lay the two side by side and figuring out which gives us the best data and information and which is most accessible by the public in order to make the correct decision. But I'm not sure if that, A, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm kind of stating that where we are at as a committee. And B, I don't know if that answers the questions you need tonight. Kind of similar to the fact that we only have two to three minutes left in this, in this meeting. Oh, Mr. Trustee Hunter.
Yeah. I mean, I, you summed up my position. I mean, you summed up my thinking on this pretty well. I mean, I would like to see it greater side to side. I do agree that this should probably ultimately be something that is brought up with the new chief. And I want to put the new chief in a position of, you know, canceling one thing and moving on to another. I think that would be a more productive conversation with the new chief. But yeah, I'd be interested in further understanding of what, you know, the puts and takes are between the different options. Thank you.
I, I believe with each of the two products, we could do a 30-day demo. The we could either run them side by side at the same time, which the downside would be you're doing essentially tripical or triplicate entries, keeping it in our current system, just in case we decide not to go with either of these two and doing the entries in the two respective systems. Or you could do 30 days with one and 30 days with the other. But the problem is you're not comparing apples to apples in terms of the number of incidents and information may, may differ. So just due for thought on that, I guess.
Trustee Stockbrand?
I'd like to make a motion. I would move that we hold off on analysis of the two proposals provided by staff until a new chief is hired and after that position is filled, we go back and review the early intervention system options.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I, I can just start the discussion, you know, I, I, again, I think we're all kind of going to the same place. But I'm, I'm going to vote no because I'd like to get this, I'd like to start. I, I can't imagine not supporting at least doing this in a trial basis. So I'd like to get the, though I understand wanting to push it back behind the new chief, I'd like to get the comparison done sooner rather than later. So I'll be voting no on this. And I just wanted to give my rationale prior, which is that I just prefer simultaneous tracks here while, while we're hiring the new chief. We also run that compare right on the compare.
Yeah, I I would vote no as well. Just I, I, I don't want the department to do unnecessary, triplicate work. I do want to see if there's greater discovery options between now and the hiring of a new chief just so we have a greater understanding of what the options are. I mean, I mean, even if it's to your point of seeing like some screenshots or just some, you know, more side-by-side breakdowns of some basic information. I think there could be some more basic information obtainable beyond, you know, having to run them and in between. Thank you.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Then I'm willing to withdraw my motion if you're willing to withdraw your second. And then I would make a new motion.
Sounds good.
I want to make sure I've got the right name. I'm sorry, I'm going to switch a screen here. I move that we direct the Shorewood Police Department to do a 30-day trial with Deer Creek Technologies as soon as possible.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? My, my only question would be, do we want to, do we want to try both or do you just want to start with, with the trial with? My my only question would be, do we want to, do we want to try both or do you just want to start with with the trial with Deer Creek?
I think, you know, from my limited experience using new technology. Maybe I'm more challenged than most people um, trying to do two new technologies at the same time. Doesn't sound as meaningful as. Doing one and then then starting the other. I just, I wonder about a learning curve. If this is three hundred bucks. Let's face it, it's not that much money. It's a software platform we're already familiar with. Um, what have we got to lose in a thirty thirty day period? It's it's a free trial um. You love it or hate it, or you don't care, and you try the other one for thirty days for free, but you know, this is not my wheelhouse.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense. I I mean, I I I agree. I think, you know, i- if if in thirty days we come back and we're we're dissatisfied with the product. We can, we can, we can try the other solution, or if we feel like it's not accessible enough or it's not giving us what we want. We can certainly try the other solution, but this at least gets us moving. So I think I, yeah, I think I can get behind that. Any more discussion? Seeing none um, all those, wait, we had the, we had a motion in a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, see seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I, opposed, uh, motion carries three to zero.
And if you want a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, that we need to do that too.
You've got it.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, I think, from.
I think Captain Leibandall was trying to say something.
Hey, can I just give one quick update? Um, we did just recently, within the last week here now. Uh, receive uh, translations for all the complaint forms and the brochures. Uh, they've been translated into Spanish. Into Russian and into Mung, and those have been now posted on our website and available for. People to utilize in those languages as well. Just wanted to give you an update on that, seeing as I had you here.
All right, thanks for that. That's great.
Great update. All right, I think we still we still have the motion on the floor to adjourn in a second. Uh, any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
All right.
I. Opposed. Motion carries three to zero. See you see you in the next meeting. Rebecca, we're we're, okay, we're moving over, right? There's different link. How is it the same link?
You're in this, you're in the same link, so you're right here and Anne is, I think, ready to go.
Oh, okay.
Hi, everyone. Do we have? Um, a quorum for our board? Yeah, we do, right? Arthur's here. Yep.
Yes, they do.
Okay, great. Uh, welcome, everyone. I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you in advance for your time, talent and patience. And um, as we do roll call this evening, I invite you to offer a salutation of New Year's greetings or whatever as we come back together after the break. Um, if you so choose, if you don't, that's okay too. Um, and all, uh, yeah, so we'll. Go through the roll, please.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Uh, here, I don't want to jinx anything, so I will uh, keep my comments to myself. Thank you.
Trustee Ursink.
Here.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Here, sorry.
Trustee Stokran.
Here.
Trustee Warren.
Happy New Year, everyone, and I'm here.
President McCabe.
And I am here as well. Greetings.
Trusty, trustee back horse is excused.
Yes, and uh, it is her birthday today, so please send a cyber uh, birthday greeting. Let's all wave. Happy birthday, trustee Backers. All right, has the meeting been publicly noticed?
Yes, it has, and in accordance with law.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item four, uh, special order of business of which there is none. There are none this evening. Item five consent agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve this consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by uh, trustee Baldoff, and any discussion, trustee Stokran?
Um, yes, could we please pull item B as in Betty? Uh, G is in Good and H is in Henrietta.
Excellent, yes, we may. Um, so motion to approve the consent agenda minus uh. E, G and H. Do we have to remotion that? For just a minute.
I would take those as friendly amendment, trustee Warren and Melissa, um, or pardon me, um, trustee more bald off.
Okay, great. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor um, of approving the consent agenda minus those items, um, show of hands or voice. I, any opposed? Okay, motion carry, thank you. So moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. We will take uh, five B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, December twentieth, twenty twenty one, trustee Stokran.
Um, yes, I just wanted to clarify that the um. The clarification I made about December sixth was um, in my trustee. Announcement, it was um, about the lawsuit. It was the East Capital Neighbors Association. Filed on November fifth with the Village Board of Appeals, and I'm sorry, I did not specifically send that in an email to the. To um, manager Ewald, so it's it's not easy to make those changes. And the other change I had was I wanted to correct the spelling of the donors for the um. Triangle Park Bench, and I sent a correct spelling, Yanoff, sir, Y A N O F F.
May, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Arndorfer, um, third by trustee Stokran. All those in favor? I.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are adopted with those changes. Thank you. Um, five G, consider service agreement for Lakefront Lifeguard Services LLC to perform lifeguard services at Atwater Beach. For twenty twenty two and service agreement for Coastline Services LLC to perform lifeguard consulting services for twenty twenty two, trustee Stokran.
Thank you. Uh, my concern here was we're still missing an insurance number and. We don't have a not to exceed on here, and I believe in the past, we. We paid the vendor, meaning the lifeguard service directly. And then they paid their insurance, and I'm just wondering. First of all, do we have a price on the insurance? And um, secondly, um, I believe the motion says liability insurance shall be paid. For by the village once the cost is finalized. Um, and I'm just wondering legally, are we under any different obligation? Would we pay the? The person who's running the business this summer? I believe her name, I'm sorry, is it Ivy? I can't, I, I think it's a French name and I don't do French. Um. Would we pay her directly and then she would pay her insurance bill if we're following the pattern we've had in the past?
So I can answer last year, it was close to about nine thousand dollars. I think it was just under nine thousand dollars for the library liability insurance. Um, and you were correct, Coastline Services last year paid for that, and then. Um, Mr. Gibson provided a proof of payment to the village and reimbursed him for that, so we would mimic that for this year for Ivy. Ivy has given me some cost estimates that she's received. Um, they've been fairly significantly lower than what Mr. Gibson has received in the past, which is good news. But it's to the point it's so lower, I I'm asking for Ivy to follow up um, with the provider, just making sure that. The coverage they're offering is matching what we're requesting. Um, so as long as that's the case. Um, I I think it's been informed to Ivy that they won't provide the actual insurance. Until it's closer to the season, that's too early yet. Um, typically, when we did the reimbursement for Mr. Gibson. It was late winter, early spring, and I would imagine that would be the case for Ivy again, so. Um, to trustee Stokerbrand's point, if you want a do not exceed number. Um, you know, you could certainly, we we have factored in the budget nine thousand. If you want a little more wiggle room for staff, so it doesn't come back and go up to like the ten thousand or something, feel free to do that. But all the early signs point to that we'll meet that for the uh, for the budget for this year for the the lifeguards.
Okay, thank you. I guess my point is it just we're already, you know, this is about twenty five percent of the whole cost. Of the summer lifeguard at the beach project, and so it is a significant cost. Um, I'm prepared to make a motion then if um, if the president wants to entertain it.
Indeed, thank you.
I move to authorize staff to enter into a service agreement with Lakefront Lifeguard Services LLC. To perform Atwater Beach Lifeguard Services in twenty twenty two, not to exceed twenty three thousand dollars for all services. Excluding liability insurance, which will not exceed ten thousand dollars. Liability insurance shall also be paid to Lakefront Lifeguard Services. Uh, through an invoice to the village.
I'll second.
We have a motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Warren. Um, is there any discussion? We've discussed this item a lot, and so it's nice to be at this place. Um, my one question is just to the obvious. Um, with Mr. Burkhart uh, departing for a new opportunity, do we have any concern that there'll be? Any challenges with taking over this supervision of the service agreement since you are so closely tied to developing it and and the program over the past three years?
Sure, um, I'm hoping my replacement will be selected and ready to go late March into April, which. Really, the only work at that point is, you know, for if Ivy's awarded the contract, we'll start the recruitment and the selection of the lifeguards. So the only involvement of the village at that time is if she needs assistance. Um, get using our village communications for that recruitment and selection process that we would do that, which. I will be providing her that contact of the personnel take over the communication during the duration of that time. Uh, once the lifeguard season starts, we'll have the 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 new assistant in the role uh, and and continuing to work with that relationship. And then I just may add, if approved, I would love to take, since this was polled, I would love to take a minute. Once it's approved to have Ivy introduce herself since she's on the call for a minute or two. Because she's been wonderful to work with thus far.
Great, any other discussion at this time? Seeing none, and I don't see any hands raised. Um, let's do a roll call vote on this if we can.
Trustee Ursink.
I.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
I.
Trustee Warren.
I.
Trustee Orndorfer.
I.
President McCabe.
I.
Motion carries six zero.
That's great, and Ivy, would you like to? Yeah, congratulations. Um, Ivy, would you like to um? Say hello?
Yes, sorry. Hello, um, I'm Ivy and I'm really, really excited to be working with the village. And able to provide lifeguard services for the beach after having worked there for the past four years. I've, or three years, however long it's been, um. I'm just really excited to be doing it myself, and I think it's a great opportunity for everybody involved.
Wonderful. Well, welcome to the Shorewood family, and we'll see you at the beach.
Thank you, Ivy.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So, um, oh, trustee Stokran?
Um, I'm ready with a second motion if you're want to.
Oh, yes. Apologies.
I move to authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Coastline Services LLC to perform lifeguard consulting services for the village in twenty twenty two. Not to exceed exceed five thousand dollars unless additional consulting services are approved by the village manager's office.
Second.
Very motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Ursink. Um, any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on this as well.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
I.
Trustee Warren.
I.
Trustee Arndorfer.
I.
Trustee Ursink.
I.
President McCabe.
I.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, and moving on to five H. Consider RFP for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Environmental Scan and Strategic Planning. Trustee Stokran.
Thank you. Uh, so, as you all know, in the. Trustees, I have sent an email this week outlining concerns of mine about um. A temporary transition period we have with staffing, um, because we are missing a, we're looking to fill a police chief, obviously. Uh, we have a new clerk and we will be looking to hire a new um, assistant manager. And I have concerns about um. Workload for village staff and how much we can really ask and expect. At the level that we're used to. Of the people that we have doing a great job, and so um, I am. Asking that we consider delaying this until at least July. Because I think a lot of our missing pieces will be in place and will be will be done with two elections. And I'm really concerned with things going on right now with the elections. Um, and that's a key piece to training the clerk and um. That's beyond our control and it's so fluid right now and it's so important. That I, my feeling is that it's something that we could put off to the second half. We could possibly put off the scan until the second half and see what the scan says. And then decide if we want to go forward with strategic planning. Obviously, the documentation. Uh, manager Ewald has already gotten it ready to go, so if we wanted to put out a strategic planning RFP. Early next year and do it in twenty twenty three. My concern was what what's the easiest, not the easiest, but what would be something we could do right now? To lighten a burden here that's temporary for a transition period, and I saw an RFP. And I thought, you know, I know I am already, I know some of us are still doing um, training. I'm doing the conversations on racism that will start. On Thursday morning, and so it's not like we're dropping the ball. I'm still carrying a ball myself. I'm sure there are other people in the village signed up for the. Uh, YWCA series also. Um, I just think this might be, and this may not be the only thing that we have to change. Because just of this temporary situation, I just think that we need to be talking about what we're facing and what our staff is facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion? So I guess that's the, I guess I should ask trustee Stokran, do you want to make a motion to defer this RFP, the release of this RFP?
Uh, yeah, if you give me a minute, I'm scrolling so I can be um. Uh, if you're ready, then I would move to approve the RFP for the EDI environmental scan to July of twenty twenty two.
Just for clarification, to be released in July of twenty twenty two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second on that motion?
I don't know if there's a second, but I believe Arthur Ursink uh, raises his hand.
I don't want to discuss unless we have a motion on the table.
Yep, I can lower my.
Okay. So if there's no second on that motion, then the motion fails for lack of second. Is there another motion? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the RFP as presented?
I can make a motion. So I move to approve the RFP for EDI environmental scan and strategic plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any discussion? We've heard from trustee Stoke Brand. Trustee Ursink.
Thank you. I'd maybe like to hear a little bit from Rebecca and those, the other staff people involved in this process to see, you know, how much of this, how much of this process is going to be a burden to to you all as we lead up to the election?
Thank you, trustee Ursink, and thank you trustee Stoke Brand for really just being cognizant and caring, I think, through this time. You know, as we go through a number of transitions, that's something that is greatly appreciated. This RFP was put together and moved forward in in large part because it was something that could be released now, and there would be a little bit of a lull for me, because it usually takes about two to three months to process through any proposal process. So it was one thing that we could get off the table and then could reenter on to then, you know, review work and contract with a vendor. You can proceed with it now, or you can also wait until June or July. Both, I think, can accommodate what would be my goal for the village board, which would be to have some solid numbers for, number one, the environmental scan, and number two, strategic planning. I'm hopeful that we'd still be able to accomplish the environmental scan this year. The purpose of having both of the scan and the strategic plan identified in the same RFP is so that we also had budgetary numbers that we could use for consideration in two thousand and twenty-three, which is important. We've talked conceptually about the cost for strategic planning, but we've never really been able to pin down what what that would look like for a municipality like Shorewood. So if something were released in June or July, we have July, August, September. September would be the latest for purposes of that information, and that's also acceptable for our timeline. I would place as a placeholder in the budget, a number that then we would tweak, and that could come before you for review in September, which lines up spot on with our budgetary process. So in either circumstance, I see it being able to work out and be able to accomplish, I think, what was, at least for two thousand and twenty-three, a goal of having that environmental scan completed.
Trustee Ursink, your hand is raised.
Yep. No, I would say that, you know, it can, can I speak? Is that all right, President McCag? I would say that this board has put a lot of emphasis and a lot of energy into this issue. And I would, you know, me personally, it would be nice to accomplish this with this this board intact before we move on to elections in April, not knowing what the makeup of that board is going to bring. So personally, I'd like to see this move forward and and have, you know, have this be an accomplishment for the board.
Any other discussion at this time? Trustee Stoke Brand.
I'm sorry. If, oh. I just wanted to state that as a new employee, I do want to thank you trustee Stoke Brand for 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 just advocating for that. But I'm in a new process, so everything is awesome to me, and I am on board. It, I am, you know, I'm excited about everything. So I'm on board, and I do agree with trustee Ursink that, yes, we should move forward. And I think this will be an awesome, awesome addition for me to just grow and learn more. But I do thank you for advocating for the newbies.
Yeah, thank you. All right, trustee Baldoff.
Um, yeah, I just kind of wanted to echo what some other folks said, you know, that it would be good to move forward and accomplish this. And, you know, I just also want to, you know, say I I agree. I think it's great that trustee Stoke Brand is concerned about our staff, because y'all are doing a whole lot all the time. But, you know, I just don't, I don't want to send the message as a board with our actions that if we are, you know, squeezed for capacity, that the thing we're gonna say, let's let's put off is our commitment to equity and inclusion. So, you know, I think it's really important that we move here forward here.
Trustee Stoke Brand, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess one thing I was looking for clarification in the email that I had sent about some concerns. Manager Ewald had sent back that information about the the committees and the commissions, because Tyler was the critical link there for five committees, and he attended them all and did minutes, and actually mentioned in his email that it was one of his most fulfilling, one of the most fulfilling parts of his job. And so from my understanding from what manager Ewald said was that she will be posting and preparing agendas and facilitating Zoom now for five. So what, I'm a little, I'm just wondering, just trying to get a feel for how much more she's doing. Facilitating a Zoom, that means you're going to be at the entire meeting?
Correct.
I'd like to hold discussion on this until the manager's report, because that's where she, Rebecca can comment on the work plan adjustments.
Okay, I guess it's just, it's hard to make a decision about, you know, we have a lot of priorities. And I see some also in terms of maintaining high level customer service at critical touch points like mailings to the community and the village website and things like that. And it's difficult, you know, if we're gonna turn these into a silo discussion about just this without looking at everything in context, I guess I don't think it's as informative a discussion as it could be or as meaningful.
Well, I'd like to, let's see if the board is ready to take a vote. I'm of the mindset that we hire, you know, really talented professionals to communicate with us and to make adjustments. And I want to give our staff the space to lead where they say that they're ready to lead. And so I also, I completely agree with the need for a lot of communication during this time and checking in and double checking. But what I'm hearing back from the staff is that this, it's okay to release this RFP as intended, and then we can make adjustments moving ahead. So I guess if if without a full review of what else is on the manager's plate, you can't take action, that would be one thing. But again, we have this on the, I'd like to stay focused on on this motion that's on the table now. Is there anyone from the trustees, any other trustees feel that we need to have the work plan discussion before taking action on this item? Oh, trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, no, I mean, I I agree. I I I trust the assessment they've made of their capabilities to move forward, recognizing whatever, for lack of a better word, hardship they may have to endure in the near term to get it done. So I'm I'm comfortable with their assessment.
Okay, I would suggest that we take a vote on this. The other option is that we can make a motion to, I think we could make a motion to hold this and and take the village manager's report next and then come back to this item. But I'm not even sure procedurally if we can do that.
You can do that. Yeah, you can. You can take an item out of order if you if you need to.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a motion on the, actually, so show of hands from the trustees who's ready to take a vote on this.
There is a, there's a motion on the floor and a second, a motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, and then a second by trustee Ursink.
Right. So there's a majority of trustees that are ready to take that action, and so let's take that vote and then see where we land. All right, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Stoke Brand.
No.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries five one.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item six, items removed from the, oh, we concluded item six. Item seven, public hearings, we have none this evening. Before we take item eight, just a clarification, this is Assistant Manager Burkhardt's last village board meeting. Is that, I'm correct in that, right? And so Tyler, are you staying till the end? Because I think we're kind of want to give you some words. Otherwise, we need to do it during Citizens to Be Heard.
Yeah, I'm staying here all the way. So whatever, what's best for you.
Could be a long one. I don't know. We might not let you go.
Let's make it the longest meeting we've had so far.
Yeah. I'm also seeing that we have Captain Santiago on the, joining us this evening. And I believe it'd be nice to welcome him. We typically have a pinning or the swearing in we usually do at village board meetings. And with the virtual, we haven't been doing that. So I wonder if we could just, under Citizens to Be Heard, sort of welcome Captain Santiago. That manager Ewald, do you think that's a, that we can work that? Okay.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay, so item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters now on the agenda, and discussion may follow, comment on non-agenda items, and take action at a future meeting. I'd like to be the first citizen to be heard and say, welcome to Shorewood. Captain Santiago, we're thrilled to have you, and I can't wait to get to know you and and work with you. Now just open it up to others. I see a hand from trustee Ursink and trustee, I mean, Attorney Bear.
I think Attorney Bear dropped off there, but I also wanted to say, welcome to Shorewood. We we are very lucky to have you. Your resume speaks volumes, and I hope you can come to our community, bring a lot of what you've brought in the past and and really, and and build off that here here in Shorewood. So welcome.
Would any other trustees like to offer a welcome? No pressure, I just want to open it up.
Just.
Trustee Stoke Brand.
Welcome, welcome, and good luck.
Trustee Warren.
Just mimicking, maybe whatever everyone else has said. Welcome, we're lucky to have you, and we look forward to working with you.
I think we have a great community here, and we're lucky to have you.
Great. Trustee Baldoff.
Yep, same. Welcome. I look forward to getting to meeting you in person, and thanks for being here, and thank you for joining the meeting tonight.
Attorney Bear.
I just wanted to also say thank you for your service and look forward to having you out in the community. And someday we'll, if you're around or by, stop by the municipal court, and I'll also introduce you to Charles Polk, who's been handling our municipal court, which you'll probably have some interactions with at some point. So just best of luck and welcome.
And I welcome Captain Santiago or Acting Chief Leventhal to offer any comments as well.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm really looking forward to getting to get to know you, you know, personal level. And I'm very, very excited about some of the work that we're going to be doing, both in the short term and in the long term with the Shorewood community. So I'm ecstatic to be here with you guys.
All right, I'd just like to, again, you know, welcome Fernando to the Police Department here. And we are very, very excited about everything that he brings to the table for this agency. When we were going through and looking at all the resumes of the very qualified people that had put in for that position, one of the things that we identified in Fernando was his ability to connect with the community. And I think that that's something that's very valuable and very important to not just to this to this agency, but to this village as a whole. And this is something that we plan, I'm really tapping into with him. So really look forward to expanding our community interaction and having him be at the forefront of doing that as well.
Great. And Captain Santiago, you came, you're joining us from Brown Deer, right? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, President Montgomery and I now have a little game that we're playing, and she's seeing how many people she can take from Shorewood, and I'm gonna see how many people I can take from Brown Deer. So so far, she's ahead, but now I've got, I'm on the boards. So that's, I feel good about that. So thank you very much. All right, so are there any other kinds of announcements? We'll hold Tyler's roasting till the end. Okay. Moving on to new, oh, any citizens to be heard this evening? Sorry, in a more traditional sense. All right, I am not seeing any hands. Okay, we'll move on to new business, item nine nine A, Consider Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash O two, a resolution regarding the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program Application for Private Lead Service and Line Replacement Project Funding. Director Bushlick, I love funding, applications for funding.
Good evening. The agenda includes your consideration of a resolution that would authorize staff to complete and submit an application for funding through this program. The the program parameters were recently changed. Prior to this, a community had to demonstrate financial need to be up to apply for this funding. That requirement no longer applies. All communities are free to submit an application. So it's staff's intent to submit an application for funding, to fund up to fifty private side water services. I should note specifically that this program is only funds the private portion of the service. It does not provide funding for the portion of the service which the village and the water utility own and maintain. Not to get the cart ahead of the horse, but at a future point in time, when we receive a decision on funding, then staff will present some alternatives or options for distribution of that funding to you. But again, that that will come after we receive word on whether our application is favorably considered.
Trustee Ursink.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Do it.
So I move to, I move approval of Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash zero two, a resolution regarding the W D N R Safe Drinking Water Load Program. Load program, right?
Type O, type O.
That's what I thought. All right, so safe, let's see, Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, Private Lead Service, Line Replacement Project Funding.
I'll second.
Now, just, can I, can I, I know we're in this, I'll save it for discussion. I'll save it for later.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren. Discussion? Trustee Stoke Brand.
Just for context, how soon will they award these? And is it, is it annually? So if we get fifty this year, could we go for fifty or a hundred or a hundred and fifty or three hundred more next year?
I don't have a time. They did not indicate a timeline for funding, but I would think that that announcement will have to be made relatively. think that that announcement will have to be made relatively soon as, as the funding is for this project year, so for twenty twenty-two. And yes, these would be annual applications for funding, so in early twenty twenty-three, we could apply for additional funding and that would be staff's intent. In twenty twenty-three, we will have a fairly significant amount of water main replacement related to the Southeast area combined sewer project, so I would expect that in twenty-three, our application for funding will increase quite a bit, given that the anticipated number of services that are scheduled to be replaced next year.
And so the fifty, the number that we're using is a number you and your staff came up with. And in other years, we could, as you just implied, we could go for more later.
Mm-hmm.
And would it be fair to say this is like a breakthrough in a funding model? If this comes through? Have we, have seen, have we seen anything similar that would help us solve this problem, this huge problem? In terms of helping property owners? Pay for this.
This is rela, this is relatively new. I, I should state though, that the total dollar amount available statewide is certainly not enough to meet the need statewide, so it's competitive funding, it's not a guaranteed allocation.
So they took the need off, how do you think they'll make, what would their decision be based on? I mean, need, I'm guessing need before was based, was it asset-based?
I believe, I believe it was income-based.
Oh, like immediate income kind of thing?
Yes, that's my understanding, yep.
And so what do you think their parameter now will be?
Um.
You know, how, what would they measure?
I think there's probably a number of different factors they could consider. I I'm, I don't have a good handle on specifically what they've identified to, to make those determinations, so I'd really rather at this point not speak on that. I can certainly do some additional research and, and provide to the board what, if any, qualifications and criteria the DNR has identified.
It's okay, I was just, I mean, I guess I'm hoping it's communities with a lot of old plumbing, thank you.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's a great question and I'd love some follow-up on that, so thank you, Director Bushlick. Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, this is just a naive process question, but I, I guess why, why, why does this come before us? Why can't Leanne just apply for these, these, these projects independently? Why does it have to come through this process?
Well, there's two items actually, a previous board had indicated a preference that staff request village board approval prior to the submission of any grant funding applications. Secondarily, and in this case in particular, that is an authorizing resolution is standard practice for Department of Natural Resources grant. You may recall a similar action that we requested when we submit urban forestry grants. They, it, it basically, the village board authorizes, you know, as you, as you know, what would authorize me to sign and submit the application on your behalf.
Got you, I probably had that same question or thought when we did this in this, in the previous loan with the urban forestry, but I appreciate that, thank you.
So it's state policy? And, and local policy, okay. Any other discussion at this time? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Warren. Trustee Orndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Ursink.
Hi.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, moving on to nine B, consider ordinance thirty thirty-seven and ordinance amending chapter four oh four, pawnbrokers and secondhand dealers of the village code. I believe this will be manager Ewald.
We're doing some housekeeping and licenses and so this is one item that's coming before the board so that we can clean up our ordinances to be reflective of how we currently process them. Essentially, what it provides is obtaining a conditional use permit through planning and development, should the property be located in B three? And then also maintains the requirement and allows the village clerk to issue those licenses when it's not a primary use. This also removes the five hundred dollar bond that's associated, which is antiquated and old practice that the village, from my review, has not ever followed.
Thank you, and I'd also, anyway, is there a motion at this time?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Let me just find it here, I move to approve ordinance thirty thirty-seven and ordinance amending chapter four oh four, pawnbrokers and secondhand dealers of the village code.
Second that.
All right, motion by trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Warren. I would just like to say that one of the things I appreciate about working with manager Ewald during this transition is she's really taking advantage of doing some different kinds of tasks and taking on different roles and improving the village along with it, so I, this is kind of one of those things, I think, and I appreciate that. Trustee Stokebrand.
So I just want to be clear, if, if I want to open a secondhand store, I will still need a conditional use permit and I will go to planning for that and I need a license and I'll go to the clerk for that, is that correct?
Correct, it should be noted though, that, that type of operation, a secondhand store or an article dealer is only allowed as a primary operation in the B three district of the village.
So. Because generally, the clerk always does licenses, right? And the conditional use permits are done by planning and that stays the same here, it's just messy language that we're cleaning up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Ursink.
Hi.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President McCag.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to nine C, we are now, this is the first, first act of the Bart Show for the evening. Nine C is consider ordinance thirty thirty-eight and ordinance amending subsection five hundred dash two six, winter parking. You're back with winter parking, tell us all about this, Director Grevenjohn.
Yeah, so as you all recall, back in November, the village board did update the, the code with respect to winter parking. During implementation, the DPW realized that two of the blocks, I did not include within though, within the adopted ordinance and so the two blocks on Bartlett and New Hall extending between Wood and Olive are also thirty-six feet wide and should be exempted from those regulations. We actually received a resident complaint or call on those that we didn't catch their blocks appropriately, so this is just an administrative cleanup so that DPW can properly remove those signs and treat those street segments consistently.
Great, I want to say thank you to the neighbors who brought that for, brought that to our attention, thank you for bringing it back for administrative cleanup. Is there a motion at this time? Trustee Stokebrand.
I move to approve ordinance three zero three eight and ordinance amending subsection five hundred dash twenty-six, winter parking.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Ursink, is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Hi.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, act two of the Bart Show is nine D, consider ordinance thirty thirty-nine and ordinance amending subsection five hundred dash twenty-five residential parking permits.
Thank you, yeah, so after November, staff continued to review implementation of the transportation and parking plan with respect to parking regulations. Within that, we did look at the daytime regulations and we realized that one of our streets is actually covered in both sections for the RCA and the residential parking permit district, they have different regulations. It is actually signed in, in conjunction with the RCCA and so this ordinance amendment would simply clean up what we currently practice by removing District H, which is East Beverly Road between North Oakland and North Murray Avenue. Like I said, that is already included in the RCCA and so it's regulated within that program and it's not needed to be in this program, it's duplicative and confusing, so once again, a cleanup item that we caught within further review, so we are recommending that this be adopted so that we can remove that and have a, a more clean ordinance.
Great, thank you, is there a motion at this time?
Sure, I move to approve ordinance thirty thirty-nine and ordinance amending subsection five hundred dash twenty-five residential parking permits. A second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren, is there any discussion? Thanks again to staff for catching this. Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Great, nine E, consider ordinance thirty forty and ordinance amending subsections five hundred dash sixteen, night parking, five hundred dash seventeen, two-hour parking limit and five hundred dash thirty-four hour parking limit as they pertain to municipal parking lots and permits, Director Grevenjohn.
Yeah, so this one's a little more substantive, just with respect to the amount of actions that needed to take place, but we also think it's a pretty straightforward recommendation. And so once again, after we implemented the parking back in November, one of our next tasks was to look at how we regulate our off-street municipal lots. Within that review, we identified that actually many of them were not codified and therefore not eligible for enforcement, quite honestly, and so the primary goal of this was to make sure that all of our municipal lots were codified in the village code so that when citations are issued, they can properly reference, you know, a code section. Part two of that was to make more, these regulations more consistent, as was the, as was the identified goal of the transportation and parking analysis. So this one has a lot of moving pieces with respect to certain lots or in certain areas and it didn't make sense or it wasn't easy to identify them, so there's a lot of numbers in the title, but generally what we're doing is removing the municipal lots from those individual sections to create a new section under five hundred thirty, which previously was five hundred, which previously related to four-hour parking, which only had one lot in it, so once again, taking things out of where they didn't belong necessarily, putting them in one place and then generally creating consistent regulations for the parking lots and so we have five municipal lots. The Hubbard Park Parking Lot and the Village Hall Village Center Parking Lot would generally be consistent, regulated as four-hour parking between eight AM and eight PM, except for Sunday's holidays and with respect to Village Hall or as otherwise posted, just because in that lot, we also do have employee parking and things of that nature, so that one's a little more specialized, but in general, those are the four-hour parking districts and then off-street overnight parking would be allowed by permit only between the hours of midnight and six AM. That just gives us a larger area for enforcement, because the on-street will be prioritized by the, the CSOs and so if they get in earlier, if they have extra time, they can enforce those between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. And then secondarily, the Menlo Park Parking Lot, Oakland North Parking Lot and River Park Parking Lot would be regulated with two-hour parking, generally from eight AM to seven PM, although the Oakland Lot would need to be six PM based on prior practice. And so it's two-hour daytime parking with off-street overnight parking by permit only from midnight to six AM. And so those are the, the, the two-hour parking that were recommended for Menlo Park, so this was reviewed by customer service who issues the permits. The finance director who was overseeing the software of the permits and the police department as well, who would be in charge of enforcement, so if this were to pass, we would have generally consistent regulations, the DPW would be charged with creating signs to place out there, we're recommending that this be passed as of March first and hopefully we can get signs out there, although I can't promise their timeframe on that, but that is the general makeup of what is proposed, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to take those.
Okay, we can start with questions or we can put a motion on the table? And have discussion afterwards, trustee Stokebrand. Oh, sorry, trustee Orndorfer, were you first?
Think so, sorry. Director Grevenjohn, just a general question, I don't know quite how to phrase it, I mean, is this going to lead to any behavior change at any of these or have any impact on the usage of any of these lots? I mean, this is kind of standardization we're looking at. I think I know the answer, I just want to get an understanding of whether this might create any confusion for people who are using these.
Yeah, so within the memo, there is a chart of existing regulations versus proposed and so some of them, for example, the Village Hall Village Center Parking Lot, that currently is four-hour parking from eight AM to four PM only and that has caused some issues with respect to people parking there at one o'clock in the afternoon and being able to park there all night long. So this would cut off that potential and the library and senior resource center are in support of this. And so, yes, there will be some behavioral issues with respect to those places that are regulated. I think the biggest change that might take place is within some of these lots that haven't been enforced. They've been signed, but once again, if the sign didn't match a code enforcement or if the personnel was advised not to enforce those certain lots and Menlo Park is one that comes to mind. This will create some behavioral changes and I think, I think we're all on board with making it more consistent and regulated as, as intended, so yes, there will be some, you know, enforcement and tickets that will take place in the first couple of months, but we think it is definitely a more consistent, easier way to communicate with, with the parkers in those lots.
Thank you.
Any questions or would somebody like to make a motion? Trustee Stokebrand.
Well, I guess that my question is, are we doing this more to make it easier for staff or for residents?
I would hope the answer to that is both. So we want to make sure that our municipal parking lots are generally consistent, so that if you park in one and you park in the other, you're not having to read a sign that says on Thursday, it's until nine PM, on Friday, it's till whatever, so once again, this is creating, creating two distinct categories, one for four-hour parking and one for two-hour parking. And so we think that it's easier for residents, guests, visitors to park in them to understand and read an easier sign. And it is consistent with on-street parking and so it's generally consistent, when you park anywhere in the district, you don't have to understand the intricacies of one lot versus the other. And then, yes, it will make it easier for staff to communicate, it will make it easier for staff to enforce and so we, we think this, this matches a lot of the goals of the study and, and we're, we're excited to be able to communicate it a lot more efficiently.
I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to entertain one.
Yes, please.
I move to approve ordinance thirty forty and ordinance amending subsections five hundred dash sixteen, night parking, five hundred dash seventeen, parking prohibited and five hundred dash nineteen, two-hour parking limit and five hundred dash thirty, four-hour parking limit as they pertain to municipal parking lots and permits.
Second.
Great, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Warren. I imagine this won't be popular with the people who have been getting to park for as long as they want without being ticketed, so that will be a disappointment. Other discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Great, nine F, consider amendment to policy seventeen, municipal parking and elimination of policy thirty-nine overnight parking permissions due to its incorporation therein. Director Grevenjohn. Director Griebman, try.
So since we um undertook the transportation and parking analysis back in twenty nineteen, I've had the pleasure of trying to unearth where various policies or programs lie within um the village with respect to parking. And um unbeknownst to me and or my my um my fault on this, but. The village did have a policy seventeen municipal parking in place, um and then last year, um we also created one municipal or for policy thirty-nine for overnight parking. It has actually caused confusion because staff doesn't know which policy to look in. And so the general goal of this is to put all parking policies and programs into one area. Um, kind of a one-stop shop for that. So, once again, in the last two and a half years, I've been finding bits and pieces here and there. The goal of this consolidation is to remove um parts of our program and policies that over the last two years have been removed. To streamline this, so it's legible for um both staff and the public to understand and to have it all in one place. And so. We're hoping that this as part of the end process of where we're at with parking policies and ordinances, this is kind of the um, well. Nearing final step with respect to um documenting all of our programs and policies, so that moving forward, whether it's me, whether it's. A new staff member in the clerk customer service office, a new police chief, et cetera, we can simply say, here, these are our parking policies. And so. Um, we're really excited that we've gone through this process, and it has taken us a long time, and we appreciate that you've come along with us on the journey. Um, because I I think it's it had been confusing for a lot of people, just because. These weren't in one location. And so um we're hopeful that um with your consideration tonight, to put them in one place, we'll have a much easier um path forward. With um maintaining and or modifying programs and policies with respect to parking within the village.
Thank you. Trustee Ursink.
So I move to approve the proposed amendments to policy seventeen municipal parking and the elimination of policy thirty-nine overnight parking permissions. Due to its uh incorporation therein.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, um, motion by trustee Ursink, trust uh seconded by trustee Warren. Trustee Stokbrand.
Um, Director Bart, I had a question on page one fifty-one, under the special accommodation off-street parking.
Okay.
The second sentence is, in order to be eligible, vehicles must have had a monthly. On-street, should that be or off-street parking permit?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for that. Yep, a monthly on-street or off-street parking permit.
Okay, and then I've I think we referenced that in the next proposed motion also, but I'll just wait. Is that a? I think I saw it on one fifty-four also. There there, I believe it's just an off-street. Am I confused?
I don't have the full packet in front of me. The section, so which um I only, yeah.
The next one is the fee schedule, and it talks about you have to have an off-street overnight permit to get the special accommodation off-street parking. Um, but I think in the the one we just looked at, it said. You had a valid monthly on-street or off-street parking permit.
Correct. It is one of the either. Um, so if that's in the resolution for that, we should change that when we get to it as well, but I will take a look, take a second look at this.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for catching that. Since those are not, those are, you wouldn't call that a substantive change, right? It's a scribner's error.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to change the motion. All right, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, this will be a roll call vote as well.
Warren.
I.
Trustee Arndorfer.
I.
Trustee Ursink.
I.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
I.
President Mckegg.
Hi.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, final finale. Nine G. Consider resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash oh zero three, a resolution amending the village fee schedule relative to parking permits. Director Griebman, try.
Yeah, so the the final item tonight just kind of um summarizes all of the those changes um within a updated fee schedule. So once again, the fee schedule over the years did not include all the programs and policies that we had. For example, the special accommodation, street parking, I don't believe was in there, it was in the policy. So. What this does is just make sure that all of the permit fees and program fees that we offer are in the fee schedule. Um, with respect to your question, trustee Stokbrand, I think this one is worded correctly, because. Special accommodation, it's only available off-street. And so if you have an on-street permit, you can qualify for an off-street accommodation of the two weeks. So I think as this is worded in here, it's correct unless I'm missing um where you were thinking it was referenced, but. Yes, this essentially just um adds all of the programs and policies that we have into the fee schedule. Some of them were not here. And some of them were outdated, and those have been removed. So um, once again, Mark, finance department, um reviewed this along with customer service and the police department. And we think it is inclusive of everything that we offer. No fees are changing, it's just documenting what we what we currently sell.
Thank you. I guess my only question would be then, um, without looking at the budget picture. Is now a good time to look at the fee structure? Um.
And yeah, Mark and I did discuss that, and we we did feel as though annually, we have that built into the budget schedule. And so as you recall, last August, we provided you with um the permit fee numbers. And so. It was our um belief that we think is an annual process that makes the most sense, and so we weren't requesting any changes now. Um, I I do think that he's open to looking at those fees. Um, but he um in discussion with him, he was uh pretty clear that he thinks that process best takes place in August prior to the budget.
And maybe we'll be more into a normal post-pandemic endemic world by then, and. Some numbers will have some stability. I don't know. Thank you.
This will be a roll call vote as well.
Don't believe in the motion.
No, I don't think we have a motion.
Yeah, we just need a motion.
Trustee Stokbrand.
I move to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three. A resolution amending the village fee schedule relative to parking permits.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Um, this will be a roll call vote. Let any further discussion?
Uh, before, I, this is just for, I want to give you guys a shout out. Um, because so many times we don't acknowledge when really big moving parts have been changing. So. I have watched um boards facilitate, request the study. Um, positively move forward and implement different objectives and and overnight parking permissions that has been. A good career in here for decades. I see Bart um leading charges on the amending these ordinance, supported by a staff and the finance director and director of public works and police department. Really doing good work with you, who as a board are really making some um. Wonderful changes to how parking works in a landscape here. So I just think that you got to pat yourselves on the back. Um, so job well done. Um, I'm sure we'll be back with more amendments, but.
No, you just said we're done with parking, right? Y'all hear her saying?
I heard that, I heard that.
We're done with parking. I heard it.
No, it's just maybe just this.
Never done.
Never done. But, good job. And thank you, thank you, Bart, and the rest of the staff for continuing to chip away. Um, and work with this big elephant that we have. So thank you.
Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, I feel like this this issue alone has dominated my time on the board. I feel like I've put so much energy into parking and and parking-related issues and uh. And even now, when I get an email from um, you know, a resident, I'm still confused about parking, unfortunately. Like I. Like, I feel like we've simplified it, but I still don't totally grasp and understand it. So maybe Bart. I, you can make, schedule me a, you know, schedule, schedule some time for me, we'll come in and and you can simplify it all for me. But. You know, I I think we're, I feel like we're heading in the right direction. I feel like we spent a lot of time simplifying. And condensing and updating, um, you know, so I think I've just got to wrap my head around.
No, it's in the fridge.
Yeah, we think this will help us to clean up our website and everything. I know that you had that comment in a in a meeting or two prior, and so. We think now with the um with the culmination of these changes here, the policies and the outdated language, we can really. I'm kind of simplifying, clarify those things. And. Yeah, um, you know, we can communicate these things, village manager's memo and and pamphlets and and things like that a lot more consistently now. So we're really excited. To be able to um, you know, proceed with with these changes.
On to stop sign.
That is an item. That is an item, trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you. I really appreciate everything that you put into this and uh and really, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, uh Rebecca, for making us take a moment and um. And acknowledge that. And I do want to thank the board as well for supporting staff bringing these things forward. So it's not easy, and. Parking was really um something to be afraid of for many, many years, and I feel like we've kind of gotten it to a place where we can, we can talk about it, and. And I have to say that I never thought, I never um. Could imagine that the transportation and parking analysis would have yielded this much, you know, good guidance. And so I have to say I've learned a lot in the. So thank you to my previous board members who saw the vision and knew that that was the way to go, and um. Thank you. So with that, we can call the roll. How about, how about that?
That sounds great. Trustee Warren Duffer.
I.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
I.
Trustee Warren.
I.
President Mckegg.
I.
Motion carries six zero.
Excellent. Uh, we have one more item of new business. Nine H. Consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one, celebrating International Migratory Bird Day.
I think this is pretty self-explanatory.
Let's celebrate. Is there a motion?
I, well, I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one, proclaiming May twenty-first, twenty twenty-second as International Migratory Bird Day in the village of Sherwood.
Second. Second.
Okay, I think uh Arthur got that one. Uh, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink. Um, this will be a roll call. Any discussion? I'm a fan. Can you please call the roll?
Yeah.
Trustee Ursink.
I.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
I.
Trustee Warren.
I.
Trustee Arndorfer.
I.
President Mckegg.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Excellent. All right, so we are moving on to item ten, reports of village officials. Um, as you can see, I have a billion. Um. Village president, um, item one, the ICC meeting on January tenth, it's hyperlinked here, so you can check out the materials. Um, the main takeaway from this is that there is a piece of legislation um that is beginning to circulate that. Uh, Mayor McBride from uh Wauwautosa is very concerned about in that it um would change the. Status of medical offices to and clinics to be not a uh tax exempt. In addition to hospitals. So right now, hospitals, um, like Medical College of Wisconsin. Are tax exempt, or if they're nonprofit. Um, but doctors' offices and clinics are not. Um, this would change that, and so it would shift more of the property um tax burden to residential homeowners in a way from commercial. Um, he's very concerned about it and came to the ICC asking for support to oppose it. Um, we were, it was not agenda for that, and really, none of the chief elects would sign on to something. You know, in opposition without consulting our board. However, as chief elects, we can sign on to something just as ourselves. Um, and so we would distinguish between the two. So I guess what I wanted to say is, and and his point, which is well-taken, is that. Tosa isn't the only one with real estate that would, you know, parcels that would shift if this were to be passed. Um, and so, for example, the orthopedic hospital that's at the corner of um. That clinic that's at the corner of Capitol in Oakland, if that became tax exempt. Um, we would lose that that tax revenue, and then more of proper, you know, residential property owners need to um take up that burden. So um, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. I would encourage you to read about it. And then I will just be um reporting back if there is something. To take action on as a board, um, I will bring it forward to you. Otherwise, if you do want to support it as, you know, on your own, you can send an email to Mayor McBride and and express that. Um, and I'll communicate anything else that I find out. Uh, trustee Arndorfer, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, can I ask a question for additional context or understanding on that?
Uh, yeah.
Any, I mean, with, at at the meeting, was there any read on the kind of momentum behind this, or?
There is some disagreement. So um. Mayor McBride's interpretation, you know, that he feels like this is imminent, and that the legislative session is coming to a close, and there's not much time, and we needed to act fast. Um, there were other uh members of the group who thought that maybe it wasn't moving, and there wasn't as much, you know. Um, momentum in Madison for this. So we don't really know at this point. So I I think the urgency, I guess what I would urge you. Or encourage you to do is to educate yourself about the policy. If you have any questions or comments. Um, please let me know, and then we will either facilitate, you know, an agenda item discussion. Um, or get an opinion from Nathan or. Something. So this is the first time since I've been on the ICC that something like this has come forward.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Um, so, and then the other um takeaway from that meeting was. My report, um, seven, which is the Oakleaf Trail Sinkhole north of Hampton has been repaired. So I I'm super psyched about that. So, yeah, exactly. Um, so then I'll, that takes care of seven. Um, item two, the proclamation honoring twenty twenty-two Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, I uh will be honored to um ask trustee Warren to read that for us this evening.
It's a, it's it's my, it's my honor. Thank you. Great. Thank you, President Mckegg. Uh, proclamation, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to advancing equality, equity, social justice, and opportunity. And challenging all people to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King believed in, extolled, and encouraged individual action and collective hope. And whereas Dr. King's legacy includes such landmark laws as the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. The Voting Ri- Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, and the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight, creating a framework to advance equality and justice in the United States. And whereas Dr. King taught us. To see the commu- commonality of our dreams, our hopes, and our fears, the truths and dignity that bind us together as human beings. And whereas we recognize that much work and commitment is necessary to achieve Dr. King's vision. As demonstrated by ongoing efforts to disenfranchise and dilute the political power of Americans of color. Through disingenuous attacks on voting rights and partisan gerrymandering that distort the core principles of American democracy. And whereas the City of Milwaukee Equal Rights Commission shares. Dr. King's belief that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. And that it requires all hands and all hearts to keep the course true. Therefore, be it resolved, that Aunt Mckegg, pre- village president of Sherwood. Does hereby proclaim Monday, January seventeen, twenty twenty-two, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, a day to celebrate, a day to act. We are delighted to join with other Milwaukee communities in encouraging all people. To observe this United States federal holiday with appropriate civic, community advocacy, and service projects in honor of the achievements, spirit, and legacy of Dr. King. David Sherwood, Wisconsin, this thirteenth day of January, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Thank you very much, trustee Warren. Um, item three, elected official NIMS training, AM and PM, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. If you haven't signed up, do so. We got to do it, and don't forget to do it. Is there anything else to add to that, Rebecca?
Nope, you covered it.
All right. Um, item four, North Shore Police Consolidated Consolidation Study. Um, the agreement, uh, we circulated, we got a copy of that agreement from Glendale. And circulated it to the village board trustees. Um, if you have any questions, please direct them to myself or Rebecca. I just wanted to say that um. You know, this is, and I sent an email to this effect too, and we shared the agreement. This is a non binding study. And I will say, I just, you know, transparency, Rob Henkin, when he was approached by the mayor of Glendale to consider this study, he made contact with the seven municipalities. And so I was one of those calls and he just called to see, you know, what I thought if a study like this would be useful, if if I thought people would participate or the municipalities would participate. And my response was, I have no reason to doubt that it would be useful and and that there would be welcome participation, that I thought that there's, my sense of meeting with the other chief elects through the North Shore Fire Department is that there's a real openness and interest, I guess, in general, in just acquiring more knowledge rather than less knowledge, right? It doesn't mean that I support police consolidation. And, you know, and certainly my conversation with him didn't commit us to anything. And it is everything that we learn from it will be shared with the village board. So I just want to be, and I did have a conversation with Mayor Kennedy and Mr. Henkin last week just to say, listen, I, it's not my study, so I'm not in charge of the communication around it. So I just want to make sure that you know that my community is very engaged. And just as a general, but then also anything regarding police, because we've been involved in this really robust, you know, process. So communication with, I need to know what to communicate and when. And because again, it's not my study. So they were very appreciative of that and and realized that other municipalities may feel the same way. The kickoff is going, the project is not going to start before February. And there will be a, an open meeting for anyone to attend to get information about that. And then most of the work is going to happen with the police chiefs and village managers or administrators. That being said, if I will let you know, if if the chief elects are involved in anything, I will communicate that to you. So please, if you have any questions or concerns, you know, please direct them to Rebecca and I. Trusty Stockbrand.
I guess when I heard about this, my first thought was, oh, I wish it had been DPW. You know, it'd be great if we could all look at moving our trash together, recycling, expanding composting, you know, as a North Shore. And the other thing I have, I have an issue with this is it's going to take our interim police chief and our village manager, you know, I don't know, we have to, they're part of the working group. And so that's another workload issue that I have.
Understandable. So Rebecca will check in, since we're all kind of waiting to for this project and engagement to begin. I think it is fair that we will check in and and make sure that the expectations around participation don't exceed what we can offer at this time. The study is, I mean, if you read the agreement, you know, the scope is pretty clear. They're not looking at all kinds of scenarios that could occur with consolidation. They're really looking at kind of conceptually and fiscal modeling and projections as well as like, you know, usage across the municipalities. And it's really just to have a centralized, you know, piece of data that that if, if the consolidation issue is pursued, that, you know, it kind of people know a little bit, there's kind of a baseline of data that's available. So, and I felt like as a fiduciary, that it's our obligation to look at different ways of delivering services. So again, doesn't mean that I've made a decision, doesn't mean any of us, and it also doesn't mean that it would be a terrible idea. So I think it's our obligation to remain open minded and I appreciate the City of Glendale for paying for the study so that we can have use of this, you know, increased insight into our North Shore region. So thank you. Oh, so that's that. Item five, the Commercial District Zoning Project. So there was a kickoff meeting last week. And I just wanted to update, you know, that basically there was an RFP, you know, sent out and contractor, you know, proposals submitted. There was not mention of a project work group in that RFP or in the proposal that we received. The consultant that we hired has requested the addition of a small working group that she can, that will complement her process and that she can check in with several, at several points during the process. It's kind of, yeah, complimentary. So staff responded. Or, you know, Bart responded to that request following the format that was used for the transportation study. And so we were, that was brought forward, you know, I think to the village board in a memo and and also to the Plan Commission and everybody's received the emails and kind of implementing that. At the kickoff meeting last week, there was a lot of discussion around, you know, maybe that there are different ways to compose a a small working group. And there was also some I, from my perspective, I didn't stay on the call because we would have had a forum of board meetings, but after watching it and and receiving emails and reflecting with Bart, it seems like, you know, clarifying the role and the task and all that of this group and seeing how it plays in with all the other aspects, the tasks of the project and the points of, you know, input and interface that then we can see the best way to integrate. We had got great feedback and great things to think about and and so, but what it does mean is that it's it's under the village board's authority to create a special committee, you know, even if it's project based. So that, so just, we do need to take action to create this group that's and define what the context is and the length of time and the, you know, composition, et cetera, et cetera. So that'll be on our next village board meeting to take action on. Bart, is there anything I'm leaving out at this point?
Nope, that's pretty accurate.
Okay. Great. So thought partners, there have been a couple of residents that have come to me with kind of like big idea interest and one similar to a discussion item at the board level around electrification, like getting ready for electrification. And then another person came forward and said, gee, you know, with people, more people working remotely, like what might that mean for Sherwood? And and does that catalyze any kind of innovative thinking or planning? And my response to that is, well, we can't do it right now because of all the things that we've acknowledged. However, I never want, you know, innovative thought to go unused. And so I am encouraging people like, find some other residents, some thought partners, you know, research, study, brainstorm, and we'll have a parking lot. And when we, you know, when, and you can come before the village board and it'll go in our parking lot. And then, you know, because if something means, if you're excited about something now, just learn as much as you can. And but I can't guarantee when it would be in committee or it would have to go through a, you know, a village board prioritization and budget and all those kinds of things. But these big ideas, that's how we got committees in the first places because somebody had a big idea. So I just wanted to let you know, and I would encourage if if you're are approached by citizens that have big ideas that we know we can't take on right now and and that have to be vetted, et cetera. Please encourage them to study and they can come before us and pitch their idea and we can put it in a parking lot. And that's it. Those are all my things. And also, Tyler, it has been wonderful working with you and it was really exciting hiring you. I was really lucky to be on the panel that with this new, this new thing we created called an Assistant Village Manager, which actually I think Leanne used to be an Assistant Village Manager back when there was one. And then there wasn't one, and then we consider one. So I am thrilled and excited for you because I know this is your dream. And I'm so with all, with seventy two municipality, or no, a billion municipalities to have one within driving distance that you want to work in is great. So I'm glad you don't have to move. And that's the end of my report. I will move on to reports of village trustees, ten B. Trusty Ursink.
Yeah, so I just want to give everybody an update on the Lake Bluff Ice Rink. It is going, it's going well. People are out there skating. People are taking advantage of it. Mark your calendars, February fifth is the Sherwood Chill. We just learned that a local musician, Trapper Shep, is coming to play a couple, you know, to some music because he's actually, he's just a huge fan of the ice rink. And and, you know, we saw him, you know, we saw he liked the page and he started sending us messages that he loved the ice rink. And we were like, hey, why don't you come play our event? And he agreed to. So that's going to be a lot of fun. I'd also like to, like to acknowledge the the bid hired a new executive director, Janet Henning. A really fantastic candidate. She was kind of in a, in an assistant role. I know that, you know, Steph Salvia had hired her to do a lot of, you know, a lot of our social media and marketing. And then she, you know, was the the candidate that that was hired that to take over the role. So I remember interviewing her when we interviewed Steph Salvia, and I thought she was a very strong candidate then. But and and I'm glad that she's in the position she is now. So that's very exciting. On a funnier note, I, you know, we all got an email about a resident that was upset about parking and and where all that money goes and all that. So I took about a half an hour, forty five minutes out of my day to call him and and talk to him about budgets and where money goes and potholes and you know, what the village is doing, only to to learn towards the end of the conversation that he doesn't actually live in Sherwood. He lives in Milwaukee. So that, you know, so if anybody, you know, if you see an email from Mo, dude lives in Milwaukee, don't, don't bother. And he's been calling everybody in Sherwood and he wonder wonders why he doesn't get responses. And and I was like, this is probably because you don't live in Sherwood, bro. So that's all I got. Tyler, I'm, you know, very happy, very proud that, you know, very happy for you. Proud to have known you and to have worked with you. Look forward to continuing a friendship into the future. Brown Deer is extremely lucky to have you. And I always kind of put Whitefish Bay as my rival, but now Brown Deer is my new rival here, you know, for for stealing so many of our, so much of our, so many of our talented employees. But yeah, I mean, all jokes aside, thank you so much for everything you've done for Sherwood, all the the energy and all the love and passion you've put into this community. It's it's going to be greatly missed. You are irreplaceable, you know. I guarantee will not find anybody half as half as what you've been able to bring to 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 us in our community. So it's sad to see you go. Your last day is actually my birthday. So, you know, I will not be able to appropriately celebrate my birthday because I'll just be, you know, drowning myself in sorrow the whole day. But but that sounds like a great time to share a beer together, my birthday, your your new adventure. So thank you for everything you've done, even though you could not get the compostable dog food bags passed, you know, you know, still grateful for all of everything you have done. So thank you, Tyler.
Just a fun, quick note about the, or the last day I picked, I've been joking around with people. I did that. I mean, it worked out that way, but with it being Groundhog's Day with the Bill Murray movie, I joked around that if that for some reason happens to me, at least I'm always living, you know, that day in and in and out working for Sherwood. So it's a, it's a good last day. Thank you.
All right, I saw Wes's hand. Trusty Warren.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what everyone, what everyone's saying about Tyler. Thank you so much, Tyler, for your your service to the village, you know, Brown Deer's gain is our, is very, I should say, the other way around. Our loss is Brown Deer's incredible gain. And as soon as I heard about your application, I knew they'd be fools not to hire you.
I froze up. Can anyone hear me?
Hello? Can you still hear me? Okay. Okay. But, you know, Tyler, I've always so much appreciated your approach. And over the last, you know, over the last several years, there have been so many times, you know, during resident committees or village board meetings, when somebody's asked a question, I thought to myself, I hope Tyler knows the answer. You always seem to know the answer. You always seem to have a solution to solve the problem. And I'm sure that's something that you'll carry forward and into Brown Deer and do a great job out there. So we'll miss you, but you're going to be fantastic at the next stage of your career.
Seeing President McCabe is frozen. Let's, Trusty Arndorfer, I'll just, we'll go down the line here.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, even before I had the privilege of joining the board, I, you know, had the, was aware of the hard work that Tyler did, saw firsthand his tireless efforts on behalf of the village, saw it even closer up when I joined the board. Tyler, really appreciate you always looking for a solution, just kind of pushing on no matter the barriers and you know, your creativity has been really amazing and it's really made an impact on the village and half of myself and you know, the three quarters of my family in particular, then one way or another have been involved with the village, really appreciate your service. So thank you.
Any other trustees have reports? Trusty Stock.
Thank you. I just want to say, I felt really bad when I heard that he was leaving Tyler going to Brown Deer. But when he told me that his family was staying in Sherwood, it was all fine. It's okay. Good for you. And I did have another item. I wanted to point out to people, there's a new sign at the Sherwood Nature Preserve. It looks awesome. It's a modern and updated information. It looks great. I want to think, I'm sure Tyler had a hand in this. Maybe the DPW and to the Parks and Public Spaces Committee, thank you. It's a big improvement.
Trusty Baldoff, did you have a report? I think you were.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everybody else and, you know, thanking Tyler for serving the village and good luck in your, you know, in your new, new adventure and Brown Deer. We're going to miss you, but happy that you'll still be around the village and hopefully we will, we will see you soon.
Any other, any other trustee reports? Okay, seeing none, I think we move on to the report of the village president.
Manager.
I'm sorry, sorry, village manager, sorry.
No problem. And I see that the village president's on her way back into the meeting. So at the last, at the December meeting, I provided the village board with the work plans, which at times can be a bit overwhelming just because of the detail and the amount of different projects that we have occurring here in the village. And so it was the request that I break it down. And so I chose to do so in a more linear fashion when categorized by department. Just noting some of the the highlighted activities that these groups will accomplish during the year. And I'm happy to answer any questions or talk you through any of those items.
I'm sorry about that, you guys, I got bumped off. Can I see the chair since now I'm on my phone and I can't see everyone?
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to take you. I'm happy to take.
Trusty Warren, thank you.
Trusty Stockbrand.
Thank you. I know this is in the scheme of things is probably not very big, but I think for the community, it's really large. And I know Tyler worked hard on a lot of work on the Fourth of July Parade. And I just, I didn't see that anywhere here. Just want to make sure, you know, it's I just think it's more than it. I think Tyler did a lot of work to make our Fourth of July parades come off well. And I just, that's just a point of information. I just it's going to be a piece that's has to be filled. I had a question about IT improvements for June. I guess I was wondering versus possible RFP for minutes and property files in the fall. IT and communication pieces, I guess, going forward, because those were Tyler's. I have some questions about those. Like, we ordered the IT improvements in March.
I'd be happy to respond to both of those. First, Fourth of July is is something, it's not meeting the radar screen on this list because it's not a highlight necessarily. It's a highlight for all of us on the Fourth of July, but that is in motion and the the person who will fill this position will also assume management of that contract with Sarah Denneve to execute the coordination relative to the Fourth of July and the parade. So that is in queue. Um, so that is in queue. Um, and I know that Tyler has left, um, her contact information and will be touching base with her, um, prior to his departure. Um, the IT improvements that you see in June is really a placeholder for Bayside, um, IT to install the capital improvements that have been slated and budgeted for, for twenty twenty-two. We like to try to clear the deck on those within the first six months of the year and try to give them some target dates so that we can get that infrastructure in place. There is one piece of infrastructure that I know is dear to the village board, which is the audio visual improvements. Um, they're actually in the process of installing them within the courtroom this week and installation will occur throughout this week and next week. And then we'll begin training, um, on that new system and provide you with updates as we proceed.
And so when will we, I mean, I think we approved things like message boards and this quarterly, uh, newsletter in June. Those things seem at this point, something, I know communication, I think communication is going to be really critical for the next six months. Uh, I wonder about adding two new elements.
A great question. Both of those projects have been pushed off, um, until June. Um, so there's not slated to be a newsletter until quarter three and quarter four, um, which would fall under the scope of the new assistant village manager. Um, the monitors, um, is something that we would like to try to get to. However, we might, you know, we understand that that may, um, also be delayed a bit, um, given the transition.
I guess I would just, um, I don't, the remodeling for the, was that in the first floor customer service? I think it's in your, oh, here it is. Yeah. RFP for clerk customer service modifications doesn't have a date, but the RFP for scanning village board minutes and property files has moved to the fall. Um, I guess, I don't know if, if those are things that can be done separately, but again, communication, I think, is important in trying to maintain, um, the level of communication and interfaces that we have with the residents is a high priority. And so the sooner we can get something done with, um, digitization of village records, um, I guess, you know, I, I'd like to see that moved a lot higher up, but I know we have constraints. So, um, I,
If I can highlight, um, one, and I apologize if the, the month wasn't listed in there, over, oversight on my part. Um, the intention is to circle back on the RFP for improvements to the customer service and clerk area, um, in the middle of the year. Um, this was actually based upon feedback from the project team and from our new clerk, who we want to provide an opportunity to actually go through to elections to also see how the flow and the workflow and the customer interactions occurs with both of those. Um, I think it's a solid decision. It's something that we didn't consider initially when we had set out with a timeline for implementation. Um, but I am convinced that we're going to get a much better outcome, um, with all of our, our team having experienced, um, what those interactions and communications are like in that area through two elections this year.
And I did have a question about the Zoom. So like conservation, you'll do the agenda and, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought.
I can actually clarify that for you because I know that you mentioned it a little bit earlier in the meeting. Um, I'll be assuming in the transition of many of those committees where, um, I'll be coordinating with them, the committee chair, um, to receive their list of items for the agenda, scheduling, posting. Um, and then the reference to Zoom, yes, I will be in attendance and I will be present. Um, and we'll be asking those committees to take their own meeting minutes as they are volunteer committees.
I do think it's, it's a critical piece and I, I applaud you for trying to do all of this. I hope that we, you know, going forward, I saw in the RFP for the new assistant manager that those committee is, assignments are still in there. I do think it's a key piece to how, why are committees function so well? That constant thread through there for communication is extremely helpful. And I realize it's a luxury. I, I don't know. I don't know if other municipalities have this. It's definitely a luxury that we have. And I just hope that we can keep, keep that going. And I hope if there's any move to change it, it's part of a much larger discussion. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I think we move on to item number eleven now. Items for future consideration and President McCag, you are, you are first on the agenda here.
Let's see, am I, okay, I'm, can you hear me? Okay? Yep, okay. Um, great. So this item is, um, in relation to, um, a concern that's been ongoing, um, on the metro market site. Um, there's a planter, some streetscaping out of the, um, entrance and exit that's on the north side of the, um, garage, um, that has been knocked, um, damaged a couple of times. People have complained about their cars being damaged, running into it. Um, staff has talked to, um, the property owner, or not the property owner, but the, um, the business about removing it. Um, they haven't agreed to do that. Um, and I think at this point, um, it, they do have a special privileged permit to, uh, because it is in the right of way. Um, and I think that since this has been an ongoing issue and we are trying to, um, work to improve that area, that is time for us to consider a resolution to remove, um, the certain streets scam elements of a previously approved special permit. So basically withdrawing the special privilege, um, of these streetscaping items, because the design of which, um, cause ongoing hazard and nuisance and damage. So Bart, I'll hand it over to you to see if I'm missing anything, but I talked this through with staff and I just wanted to bring it forward.
Yeah, that's very accurate. So, um, within my four years here, it feels like every three to four to five months, um, it's been damaged and or brought to my attention. I was damaged pretty significantly last fall, at which point actually, um, my staff and myself reached out to the metro market and just asked like, isn't it time to just remove this? This seems to be, um, kind of burdensome for all parties involved to keep restoring it. They indicated that it's their preference to, um, keep maintaining it. Um, it was then hit, um, subsequently since that time. And so, um, the only real way for, um, us as the village to, um, you know, to make any impact in terms of removing it would be to act by resolution to rescind that special, um, privilege permit. So, I'm, I'm not saying that that's what the board necessarily needs or wants to do, but I think it is time for that discussion just because, um, it, it does come up, um, quite a bit. Um, I, I don't think that we, even if we were to adopt it, it's not going to be removed, you know, overnight. So I think getting it discussed in the spring so that, um, removal within the construction season makes sense would, would be good for us. So whether it's on the exact, you know, the next agenda or a future one, I think it would be time to discuss it this spring if the board so chooses. And that way we at least have some clear direction as to what to do in that particular area. The transportation study did also look at that area and has recommendations for it. And so, um, we would bring that back. Um, if, if directed to do so as a, as a more complete memo item summarizing, um, you know, what that says and, and what we, what our options are moving forward.
So yes, at this time, I'm just asking that the, um, board consider putting, placing this, approving this as a future item for consideration. You don't have to support the, the motion. It's, it's simply to get it on the agenda for discussion and, um, review. So I will, I guess I'd like to make a motion.
Can I ask a clarifying question of, uh, Director Gepentra?
Certainly.
Um, have they put, has, has the operator put forward any rationale as to why they want to have that in position?
Yeah, I think the main, um, main reason, my understanding is that it's not as simple as just removing it. It does, um, you know, have a foundation or something of that nature that would actually require the sidewalk and portions of the driveway to be removed. And so it, it's more than simply just removing the bricks. It's, it's kind of getting into some of those areas as well. And that would impact, you know, the usability of that, that area for a, a week or so or whatnot. So, um, it, it seems like a simple removal. And I think if it was, they would have agreed to it. Um, but I, I think it's more construction than we all realize, which is why they're fine repairing it. But at the same time, repairing it every three to four months, is not solving anyone else's headaches with that. So that's, then I think is the primary reason as to why they're choosing to, um, fix it as opposed to remove it.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess at this point I can appreciate your question, but I would hold any questions around the merit of, or the likelihood that we would approve something like this and really just, uh, I'm bringing this forward because it's the only way that we can actually explore whether it is something that we, an action that we would take. We can't do that without having it on the agenda.
Trustee Stokerbrand has her hand raised. I don't know if you can see, people are not.
Yeah, I, trustee Warren is still technically cheering.
Trustee.
Oh, sorry.
If there are any visuals, could you please, because staff, if this, if this is approved, please provide visuals because I'm having a hard time. Like the damaged property or I, I'm not there a lot, so.
Yes, I'd, we'd be happy to do so if approved.
I don't see any other hands. President McCag, uh, trustee, trustee Ursink.
Uh, what do you, do you need us to, to move? How do, how do you want to move forward with this? Uh?
I can make a motion and then, um, I would need a second.
President.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to consider a resolution to remove certain streetscaping elements of the previously approved special permit, privilege permit issued at forty seventy-five and forty-one fifteen North Oakland Avenue and a future agenda.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, second then. Second by trustee Ursink. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a roll call vote. Uh, and Drew World.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yeah.
Trustee Stokerbrand.
Hi.
Trustee Warren.
Hi.
President McCag.
I.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other items for future consideration? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to move into closed session. And just a reminder, we need the language of the motion to, uh, exactly match, uh, what is written on the agenda.
Thank you, trustee Warren.
Trustee Stokerbrand.
A move that we go into closed session, um, pursuant to nineteen point eighty-five, one G to confer with legal counsel on strategy regarding a notice of claim in the matter, matter of Michael Breiner versus the Village of Shorewood.
Second.
Have a second from President McCag. I think we take a roll call vote here.
Correct. Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokerbrand.
Hi.
Trustee Warren.
Hi.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Hi.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. And at this time, I'm going to, uh, move to do a breakout room and then I'll begin moving trustees over.
Great. Just when you guys thought we were getting out early. So.
Can we have five minutes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, bathroom break, bio break.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's, let's take, again, if I'm still cheering, yeah, let's, let's take five minutes. Um, Rebecca, I don't know if you want to move us over before or after.
I'm gonna, I'll move you over now, but then when you come back, you'll be in the breakout room.
So I should, I should not push the leave button.
No, no. So let's, um, and let's, let's, we're going to get moved over automatically. Let's take five minutes. Let's be back at nine. Let's start this at nine thirty.
Toya, it's, it's, I'm going to have, um, you can sign off now. Thanks for joining. I didn't really, I'm going to join us tonight.
About that.
Yeah.
I was like, hey, do I need to stay on?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay.
Night.
Love the new breakout room feature for a closed session. That's.
Hey, isn't it nice?
Yeah.
Be fancy.
Very fancy.
Is it the metaverse?
We're still.
Can you break out a breakout room? So can we go in one breakout room and continue breaking down those breakout rooms?
I don't know. About my. All right. I, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Moved. So moved.
We have the mo, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, second by trustee Arndorfer. Any further discussion of adjourning this meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at nine forty-eight.
Good night, everybody.
Have a great night.
Night, everybody.